Let's follow the meeting to order.
Yeah.
I guess I should do that at 4:13 PM?
Yep. I am just bringing up on the, my laptop here, the agenda, information for today. So, we have all three members of the committee present. First item up was the minutes of the July 22nd, 2021 meeting, and I think that's so recent, in fact, Jamie, I don't think I've gotten it.
I have not written those up yet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But we'll have to do a double at the next meeting.
Yeah.
So then that takes us to discussion of hiring a contract manager. And we had put out the RFQ. We have three responses, one from Shales McNutt, one from WB Olson, and one from Rethink. I can report that all three representatives from all three firms came out and talked with either myself or Lindy, or in one case, both. And were shown the space and talked with us about the full scope of the project, not just the reading room, but the full scope of the renovation and expansion. So, you know, what we have in front of us then is the information that we received then. And the goal for the meeting today is to really go through the information that we had received as far as the suggested questions for the building manager interviews that we had received from Joe, see if those work, make any changes that we wanted to make to those, and then kind of get ourselves organized basically for the interviews, which are going to be next Monday. So I have now heard back from all three of the contracting firms, and all three did confirm for the dates and times that we had requested.
Let's starting at...
Now, are we going to have those via Zoom, or will we be in person for those, Eric? What do you have planned?
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the questions that we have up before us today. And probably the first one, since it's about how we hold the meeting in the, in the first place. I mean, we could certainly do an in-person meeting and just, you know, masks and social distancing. Right now, just given the current state of things and the recommendations recently from the CDC, I've been trying to err on the side of caution and going with Zoom meetings wherever possible. You know, on the, on the, on the one hand, they are coming in as building project managers, as far as the position that they're seeking. So there could potentially be some value in having that then conducted face-to-face here at the building. It shouldn't be conversely completely crippling if we don't, because they have, they did make the point of coming out and seeing the building. So it won't be in any of their cases like they've never been here either. So... I, I think on the one hand that ordinarily, we would want to have them out, but we could really do whichever we feel most comfortable with.
It would be just one person, correct, from each of the three companies? Or would there be multiple people coming?
Um, I think it depends. What we, what we had asked was that for, for the interview, that we wanted to be sure that we had a chance to meet the site manager. That was a recommendation from, from Sean and Joe, that we be sure to meet that person. This will be the one onsite that we'll be working most directly with. And if it's somebody that we can't get along with, then that's obviously going to be a big problem towards getting things done. Other than that, I haven't made any requests as far as who or numbers. Kind of assumed that they would at minimum want to send out somebody that could do the usual interview process. And then for our purposes indicated that we wanted to meet that person, which is a very long way of saying, I don't know.
What does the rest of you think about it?
Um, so I, this is Bonnie, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Okay, the, the yellow thing isn't indicating that it's picking up my audio, but that's okay. Um, you know, I, I think that ideally, in a non-COVID world, we would all be in the library for these interviews. But we are dealing with, what, the fourth wave now? So I think we should have Zoom as an option. You know, we, if all, I think there are six of us present right now, one, two, three, four, five, five of us present right now. Six, seven, I just, I don't know if there's a space where we can comfortably socially distance and not wear our mask. So my preference would be that we have Zoom as an option.
Well, I agree. And I don't think anyone should feel hesitant ever to say that that is the option. You already justify it. There's a way to get people as well. I think right now, it's just a smart thing to do. And to your point, this is the biggest space within the end, and I think that would not really be even the guidelines.
Yeah.
They've been here to walk through the, walking through the project. There's something to be done with Lindy and Eric that comes to be, and they've all done that. And a couple of the, a couple of the booklets actually specify who the project manager is. I'm assuming that's the person I'm interviewing. I'm very comfortable with that. And I just, I, I really have to insist that this is up and running 15 minutes before we need it. So it runs flawless. Because it's, this is what I've just put forward to stumble through the reduction.
No, correct. And I'm sorry for not having it up and going today. I ended up...
Just us, but yeah. When it gets to having people...
Yeah.
We're falling back on, we're gonna be meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
We're back into that, we were...
Yeah, yeah.
Being in person, but I think it's temporary right now.
Yeah. No, I ended up with some passports that ran much longer than I was expecting. So left me at a scramble this afternoon, which is, you know, as, as you noted, we don't want to be doing that when we're having somebody in that we're interviewing. That's not a good thing.
That was my other, my only other thought about this, or my only other hesitation for doing it via Zoom is how I would assume that they would participate from their offices via Zoom as well. So have you checked with all three of them to make sure they have Zoom capability? Because I know some, some businesses use other platforms. And I've found the one other platform that I've used, which I can't even remember what it is now, but it's really wonky with my, with my programs. My Zoom works fine, but other ones don't work so well.
I will check. I will check and I will make sure that they have the necessary capability.
Well, should we, should we just decide then that if, if in fact, they do have Zoom capability, we do these by Zoom? They've already seen the building. I think that the impediment of talking through screens versus the impediment of being distanced and all of us masked, one cancels out the other. So...
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's reasonable to look at it as a pick-your-poison sort of situation that, you know, can we be unmasked and via Zoom or masked and six feet apart and shouting at each other around a circle? So I will then, it, it sounds like the sentiment is let's go with Zoom. And that is how I will follow up with setting up the, the details of the meetings next week. Right now, those meetings are set at 1:30, 3 o'clock, and 4:30. And that's on Monday, August the 23rd. I will be sending out the, the links there once I get those generated.
So that takes care of part of number four on the agenda. I would assume the other part is to look at these questions that
Yep.
Ingrid Anderson was so generous to share with us.
So I have a quick question, Jamie, if you don't mind. So is one, are these three separate Zoom meetings that we're going in and out of? One is scheduled for 1:30, and then we're off, and then another is scheduled at 3:00? Or is this a continuous form?
We can do either.
We could do it separately.
Yeah.
That would take care of the schedule. Whatever the group one, I would think that sounds very efficient.
Yeah, in, in terms of the posting, what we'll, what we'll do is, because we'll have a quorum, we will go ahead and post it as a Building and Grounds Committee meeting. And I'll just post it as one meeting. And then we can use as many different Zoom links as we, as we want. I, I think that what I will probably end up doing is one Zoom link for each of the candidates, because that should minimize the, the chance for awkward overlap.
Right, so they have a Zoom, for instance, their Zoom is at 3 o'clock.
Right.
So they just kind of, by that time, we're well past you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kathy, I'm having a real hard time hearing what you're saying.
Well, Eric, repeat, we were just kind of, I'm sorry.
Um, I think, yeah, Kathy and I were discussing just doing one Zoom link for each of the folks that we would interview. And then that way as well, then, you know, if we were still talking with somebody 15 minutes before the next one started and, and somebody arrived 15 minutes early, then we didn't end up with like multiple contractors sitting around for a portion of the interview.
Right, right, I, I think that's the way to go. I know that makes it more complicated for you, Eric, but that's the way to go.
Oh, that's, that's fine, that's fine. It'll work fine. The, I'm just looking here for the questions from Joe. There we go. Okay, so I will bring these up and then I will hit share. And eventually presumably it will open. Everything is insisting on breaking. Let me see here, maybe it was going, there we go. Had, uh, had my water heater go kaput on Friday, start pumping carbon monoxide into the house, so that was fun.
Oh my goodness.
Everything breaks. Yep. Better?
Yeah.
Okay. So sample questions. Probably just start at the, the top here. Doesn't look like a very long list. So why don't we go through what Joe has given us? Then we can discuss whether there's anything that we want to add, subtract, or change. How does that sound as far as an approach we're going through? All right, sounds, sounds like we'll go. Describe your approach to quality control. Describe the value engineering processes. Describe your proposed scope of services for this project. Is your approach to scheduling slash sequencing? How do you handle cost modeling? What challenges or problems do you foresee with this project? What is different about public sector projects? Describe any experience you have had working with a public library or on a public sector project. What has been your most challenging project and why? What are your views on doing some of the work yourself? Why are you interested in this project? How do you structure your fees? And do you have any questions?
I don't understand question number 10.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm not really sure on that one myself.
What might they do themselves?
You know, I'm not really at all sure. You know, I don't know why we would want to have them do that. And I would think that if we were going to have them do some work, that that would be, you know, part of the... We would want to have them submit a bid. As, as part of the bid process, getting things going.
Right.
Strike that question. And then you follow up with Joe and see if there's an explanation.
You know, it seems to me this might be a more germane question if it was a, you know, somebody doing in addition to their home or something like that. I, you know, not that this is a real big scale project, but it is a public sector project. And those kinds of things need to, need to be treated differently. So I'm wondering if that's a prestige of...
That could be, that could be.
Of that kind of a project. And the other thing that it occurred to me, I, not having done a lot of these, I could see advantages both ways to either letting the three candidates have the questions ahead of time or not having the questions ahead of time. If they, you know, if they have them ahead of time, they're going to have more of an opportunity to think through and will probably be able to go through them more quickly. Whereas if we ask them and they haven't seen the questions before, they'll be, we'll see them think on their feet. So I, I just don't know how you feel about giving them the questions beforehand.
I suppose I wouldn't. But I don't feel really strongly about that. So mostly because I, I think that most of the questions that we would be asking here aren't, you know, necessarily anything of a technical nature. They're, they're mostly experiential or workflow related. So I would, I would think it shouldn't be too much of a challenge for anybody to give a pretty decent answer for most of these on the fly without knowing that they were coming. You know, if we were going to be getting really into the nuts and bolts, then yeah, I would say we absolutely, in all fairness, ought to provide that so that they can do the, the math or measurements or whatever.
Right.
To do ahead of time. But...
I have an observation, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, very well.
Was that a not very well, or a very well?
Not very well.
Maybe it helps to get the computer closer. Is that any better?
I'll do my best, I'll speak really loud. Like, it's a small question. I don't know anything about engineering and, and interviewing these and cost analysis and all that. I was just thinking, maybe question, the new question number 10 should be first, which is why I'm interested in doing this. That gives us kind of a get-to-know-you conversation and what it is about the job that appeals, which might, he then might be able to use his answers to exemplify what it is about the job that's attractive that we would understand. I also wonder, question number... Oh, the question number nine about other public libraries. First of all, it's kind of redundant, because the paperwork tells us yes. But it might, I would like to know what, what experiences with other public libraries do you have that would lend itself or would make you interested in our job? Or would help improve your success with our job? Something, I mean, we know that they work at libraries, so let's make it personal to us on why that's a good thing.
What of your public library experience do you feel is relevant to this job?
Yeah, something like that.
Does that sound, something like that? Because Kathy's absolutely right. We, we know they've got public library experience, because they've, they've shown us that, it's in the book.
So can you restate that, Eric?
What of your public library experience you believe is most relevant to this job?
Good question.
And I'll even, I'll even bowl the portion there, since that seems to be a favored
Yeah.
tactic for Joe there to highlight the, the subject. Okay.
Um, hey, you know, there was just something that popped into my mind too. This is a relatively small job. And I'm sure that, that the people who are bidding are aware that we will hopefully have more work down the road.
Yes.
Um, and this is, this is sort of a a trial, as it were, for a, a future project manager to be hired. So is it clear to them that they should be concentrating on this job and not really bringing up the, the future jobs? I, I mean, I...
Yes.
I, I hope that they realize that, that, that we're focusing on this right now. And yes, there may be something down the road. And yes, this is a bit of a dress rehearsal for that.
Yeah, that was a question that we, that was a question and conversation that we got with the, the folks that we received responses from.
Okay.
Basically, it's good to know the future of the project. Which should I, you know, which should I talk about? Should I talk about the big project or the, or the reading room? And we told them to talk about the reading room.
Great, so you've already gone...
We're just giving you, we're just giving you a lay of the land and what's going to be going on, so that you've got a full picture. This is what we've got going on right now. And this is what we need first and foremost, somebody to do.
Great, great. Just wanted to clarify that.
You know, I mean, I, I can't guarantee that they won't want to try and get sidetracked.
Right.
But...
But at least you've had that conversation already, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, this is Bonnie, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So I, I, I agree with Kathy's recommendation that some of those early questions in this list probably need to be reordered. For example, the value engineering and the quality control. I think I'd pull those a little later, because they're kind of real, real specific. And I have two questions I recommend we add.
Okay, give me just a second here to move. I agree with those two questions. And what are the two that you've got, Bonnie?
So the first would be, I, and again, it could be, it could be combined into one. But I, I think what's unique about projects in the last 18 months anyway, is the possibility of, of a very short notice closure of the library as well as we've had power interruptions. Right? So I think understanding their experience in managing projects during COVID or managing projects when sometimes, you know, I, I think the power went out for five days last year. Power went out recently. You know, I, I think that how we want this to work is that, Eric, you know, you would notify the project manager, hey, power's out, we don't know when it's going to come back. And they would notify any of the subcontractors or whoever was expected to show up onsite. Right, so I just...
Bonnie, without, I'm guessing that's going to be written into their contract. That's, that's above and beyond their control. The only good thing about this project is it's going to happen in the winter. And there's a lot, Eastlake Glenwood is absolutely notorious for power outages. But it's a lot less in the winter than there is in the summer, which works to our advantage.
True.
Quite as well taken. I'm guessing, I mean, they got to cover their backsides on that, as far as that's above and beyond their control. But I think we, I think the COVID question is very good. What experience do they have managing projects since the onset of COVID-19?
Right, I, you know, I, and then building on that even further, you know, I don't know if, if we can or we want to say, we only want people onsite wearing masks, you know, we're going to have to communicate that to them. Do we, do they have to wear masks onsite?
Yeah.
Do we want them to report vaccination status?
To that point, I'm not trying to be controversial here, but do we want to know that our Glenwood workers are vaccinated? If I had a worker in my house, I'd ask that question. And at least, at least then, by knowing the answer, I can help prepare staff and patrons, et cetera.
I'm not a hundred, I'm not 100% certain that, because we're a public entity looking to contract, that, that's a question we can ask. But I will check.
I think anything is a question we can ask. What we have no control over is what mandates may come down between now and contract signing or next February or so. But I think, under the circumstances, I don't know what would bar us from asking a question.
Well, it's getting into, into medical.
We're not asking you if you've been vaccinated.
Right.
We're asking if they would anticipate that they're, the people that they're...
Okay.
I don't know how to phrase it, but I think it's a, I think it's a question we can ask without invading privacy. What is the, well, you can ask, let's call Joe Smith from McNutt. Do you know if you are, have contractors? Do you know if they have a policy regarding vaccination?
Yeah.
And then that would receive an answer. Or at least masking, which is important.
I, I think that, well, yeah, I mean, that, that's a must. You know, they, they've, they've got to follow the library's guidelines as far as best practice and what we're asking everybody at this point to do. So, um, I, I, I think, I think that's a good one.
But if, if CDC is telling us we should be, we should be cognizant of the population we're in a room with, then I think perhaps we have the obligation to be cognizant of the room we're bringing our staff into and our patrons. Therefore, we need to know, you know, the practices of people who are working here. And also then, plus that the safety of that is the precautions of the day.
Right.
So it's actually venue, Bonnie, because it's a heck of a complicated question.
Yeah. I, I, I think the, the vaccination question, I think probably will be okay if we want to put that in there. I am going to double check on that, just because I want to be sure on it. I think maybe the, the question, because we, we know that all these folks have been working during the last 18 months. But I think the question then boils down to, how have they handled that? You know, there's, there's been a pandemic, you know? What have you been doing as a, as an employer to make sure that, you know, your employees are safe? That the people that you are working around are safe? It's, it's a challenging wrinkle. What, what has been your procedure?
I think I know the answer to this, but are these, is this project manager and the people he will be working with, let's just put this in the last... Let's just put this in the last year where they consider essential workers. Because if they are not, and things get really bad again, the whole thing's going to get shut down.
Yeah. I don't know that construction was considered
Well, let's ask them.
Essential work, but we can ask, yeah.
Some construction was, and a lot of house projects were not.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah, some some definitely was. Some some construction definitely was considered essential.
A lot of, yeah.
There's certainly a lot going on around here. There were a lot of people working outside and
Yes.
You know, they 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 weren't jammed into small spaces together, so.
So how do we want to word this? As as far as putting it down as a question?
Well, I like your phrasing. What has been your procedure for handling COVID since the beginning of the pandemic?
I would say keeping, you know, keeping your clients and your staff and subcontractors. Talk, I'd ask them to talk about all three.
That's a great point.
Okay, so what has been your procedure during COVID-19 for keeping your staff, clients, and subcontractors safe?
Perfect.
How does that sound, Kathy?
Well, that's a good question, but also if you if you were involved in projects during COVID-19, what what I'm just I'm just, what caused interruptions and how would you handle interruptions and the sequencing of your job or something?
Yeah. I think how you handled interruptions is a good overall question. And that you know, that that can be, you know, interruption with COVID, interruption with power outage. So maybe just how maybe ask for an example?
Yeah, another current example with construction has been the supply chain issues has caused interruptions in some projects as well.
How do you handle unexpected interruptions to work? Can you provide an example? But yeah, no, I mean, I I don't know if I I mentioned for the committee last time, but I know that in 2011 that we had a protracted power outage in the middle of that renovation project as well. So I don't know if it's our part of the grid or here in Lake Bluff or or what it is, but you know, power outage is probably something to plan around.
Yeah.
Okay, Bonnie, those are good suggestions as far as questions.
They are.
And go back up to one.
Up to one, okay. Do we want to move maybe the scheduling and sequencing and the cost modeling down as more technical questions? We moved a couple down.
That's not a bad idea because you're getting into the nitty gritty with those two a bit more.
So we start out about more general. Scope of service, challenges or problems, public sector projects, what makes them special?
Number seven, you might want to change that you that's double underlined there.
Oh, yeah, that should be.
There you go.
Should we ask, um, what's the contingency plan? Should the project manager, him or herself be unavailable for 14 days as an example?
Oh, yeah, but you know, that that's a good question.
Are there substitute project managers?
That would be a good question. That is a good question. Information to that effect?
Yeah. But we should ask because I didn't because I'm interpreting.
Well, and you know, looking at the at who's on staff might not give us the full picture as far as as far as staffing, you know? There there's definitely multiple contract managers listed for a number of for a couple of these folks, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be available. They could be you know, all all booked up. I don't know. Let's let's put that down. I like that as a question. Trying to think how to word that. Would you handle medically unavailable?
Just just say unavailable. Why would you say unavailable?
So when we got like open segments in this, is that what I understand is we're we're hiring them to do this job, but then what happens next? Do they disappear for months or do they pop up two weeks later with estimates or do they, you know, what? What exactly is the next step with it, that a newly appointed project manager, or do they begin their job?
Well, the first thing that we would do is we have their qualifications. So what we would then do would be to take that document that we had put out as far as the initial request and translate that into a contract agreement. That spelled out in, you know, contracted detail, you know, what we wanted them to deliver and when we wanted it. And then hold them to that. I I think based off of what we had in that document that the the first thing that they would work on would be the cost estimates. And that that would be the big initial thing that they would be contributing prior to getting started on the the regular bid process. Because we would want their feedback on the the bids that we received as well, since you know, one of the things that we would have them in for would there be would be their experience in working with other contractors. So if if they have knowledge that you know, that some of the contractors are better than others that we're talking to, then you know, we would we would want that information from them. And so that's a discussion that we'll have. And then I I think the big lion's share of their work would be when the project really gets started.
So the first thing would be to get contracts, estimates in there.
Yeah.
You specify a period of time after you get the part of the discussion or is that part of the scope and sequencing that they have?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so that would be the first part. There's there's I don't even have to schedule them and sequencing. So that would be the first task that we would be seeing results from.
Yes. That would be the scheduling, sequencing, getting things scheduled, cost modeling. Those would be starter things.
Also, Bonnie, to your point, maybe number 14, how do you handle cost modeling and supply chain interruptions? Maybe we should put that in there. Anybody thoughts?
I I think, though, with the the project manager, there's really not a lot of materials involved. It's the person's know-how and experience.
I'm sorry, that's kind of what I meant.
Yeah.
Trying to see how we can integrate cost marker at the supply chain into these questions. Maybe that's part of 13, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, and we've got a question in there as well as far as
Oh, all right.
You know, how we how they handle unexpected interruptions and that would probably fall under that. Interruptions and delays?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I I think you're right. I mean, that could definitely be, it could be a power outage, but it could also be with the supply chains where they are right now, be a situation where, you know, they've got a contractor saying they just don't have what they need to do to work. You know, so how would you approach that as the as the project manager? Okay.
I'll leave that behind, I guess, I'll give.
I think that gives us 15.
This is a pretty, pretty thorough list, if you ask me.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty good. Um, I've got to run upstairs real quick and I'll be right back. Please continue discussing.
I'm just, I'm trying to think of any other eventualities. I think you guys have got them.
I also agree that we might be asking too much to get through in an hour or so.
Yeah.
I don't know how much of this is going to be repetitious. Are there five of us today? So will all five of us be asking questions today or could miss any? We have 15 questions. We could just go one, two, three, one, two, three, down the line.
Well, that would have been my only reason to give the questions out ahead of time, so so it would speed up the process, but that's okay. And you know, and some people in their answers might answer subsequent questions anyway, so you just never know what kind of responses you're going to get to something like this. Is everybody happy with the with the list we've got right now?
Yeah.
Bonnie, you good?
Yes, yes.
What do you think, Lyndy?
Sorry, I had to find my mute button. I think it looks great. Um, you know, I know things are going to be expensive and I know their prices are coming down, but like two by fours are like five times as much as they were like 18 months ago. So if there's another uptick, how do they handle that? And I don't know how to ask that question. And we could probably ask it. I mean, I think they're going to answer and we're going to have questions about their answer, perhaps, that aren't on the list. So that's another benefit of having some of these questions. We don't have to give them everything ahead of time, but just so they, you know, can wrap their head around what's going on with us. And as far as being closed, that would be ideal. They could do make as much noise as they wanted. You know, I could let them in. A lot of times when we were closed, there were one or two of us in the library anyway. Unless we have to fog and then we can fog and then the next day come in or something like that. So I think there's a lot of options.
Yeah, the only thing that would probably really shut things down would be a power outage.
Right. And then they have to anticipate bringing small generators, but a lot of their tools are, you know, cordless. So they would just need a small generator, I would think, to charge up their cordless devices. Unless they have a big vacuum, which I hope they do.
Yeah, I mean, they have a construction people work on sites without electricity, so I don't do we want to structure this by each does having some of the questions and going through a just a repeat pattern? And if someone's already answered a question about just stretching out my list, or do you want to just have what's the most orderly way to get through this?
I would suggest rather than alternating I don't know, Kathy, you take question one, Janie takes question two, I take question three and so on. It would be easier to group them. Like I think back to the trustee interviews where I think it was grouped. It was, you know, two or three questions from one person, then it moved to the next. It's just a little easier of being on the receiving end to stay focused, especially when we're on Zoom, too.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Well, that's what I thought with 15 questions. There's five of us and that's three questions per person. And it's also a good way it's the only way to put a name with a voice and a face is Zoom. So if you just, some of us, one, two, three, and we'll have six.
Yep, that sounds good.
Do we want to try and divvy those those up now?
Yeah, we'll send this this up to you.
Oh, yeah, this is this will be going out to everybody after the meeting.
Yeah, why don't you guys mind? I would suggest Eric do the first three questions. He's the most familiar here with these folks.
Stop giving me so much space here. Okay. So I'll start with one through three. Who would like to start with four through six?
It doesn't really matter to me.
Four through six is public sector jobs, relevance to the job, most challenging project.
I'll take that. Let's just get through this. I'm out of the second group.
Okay. Seven through nine. These, I believe, should be the safety questions on COVID. Bonnie, those were from your suggestion. Put you down for them.
Sure, I'll take seven through nine. Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm just momentarily lost my map. Okay, so 10 through 12.
Yeah, I can take those. That's fine.
I do need to check with Lyndy here to make sure that she'll be available next Monday. Lyndy, will you be available next Monday?
I'm sorry, um, I hope so. Yeah, 1:30, 3 o'clock and 4:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I don't need to ask any of the questions. I mean, I met with everyone and I'll I'll be talking, but if you guys want to handle the questions, that's fine. And if you want me to do it, that's fine, too. Yeah.
Well, we could put you down to ask if there's if they have any questions.
Okay, good. I'll be the victim.
And I mean, you might you might know a bit more about when they're talking about like scheduling, sequencing stuff than that we might.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think Gantt chart would be helpful. If they could provide that, I think we had that last time with Dustin. Yeah.
What kind of a chart, Lyndy?
I think it's called a Gantt chart. It's where they, you know, it's like they have dates and then what goes where, when? And it it visualizes for the layperson, are they behind schedule according to what they told us in the beginning, just kind of, you know, bird dog? They're they're doing, you know, supervise the supervisor. They're they're doing, you know, supervise the supervisor from just a very general way.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got the questions broken out, and I think we're in general agreement on the questions. As the first person with questions there as well, I'll plan on doing a quick round of introductions to get things started so that everybody knows who everybody else is.
Perfect.
Anything else that we should cover ahead of the meetings? I am planning to have things set up at least 10 minutes beforehand so that things will be up and running ahead of time. And it probably makes sense for us as the folks who are going to be doing the questioning to try and arrive at least a good five minutes early so that we can kind of get ourselves situated and be organized for them coming in rather than all of us showing up at once.
Then in terms of a recap, I'm just sorry to show you. Are we going to, are we going to order each candidate after 15 questions, or are we going to wait until the very end and then compare and contrast? What's the best format for this?
We can do either. I think it just matters. I think it's just which is we're going to feel is most efficient.
I I would agree. If, you know, if we get all the questions answered in an hour, we could easily take 20 minutes to chew it over amongst ourselves before we start the next session. And so give us a 10-minute break. But if we end up going over with some of the questions, then that might not work. So we might just have to take it as it comes.
Yeah. Let's be sure to have at least 10 minutes before the second and third candidates.
Yeah. I would agree.
Yeah, yeah. No, I've tried to build that in as far as the the timing so that it's not just one after another. There there should be time built in between with, you know, running the interviews back to back. You want to be sure that you've got that. Otherwise, you know, otherwise you get really crabby interviewers by the last one, and that's not a great outcome for anybody.
That's true. And on Monday, will we will we know their potential fee on Monday?
We will not.
Can you repeat the question? I heard Kathy say, will we know the potential something on Monday?
Fee.
Fee, okay.
Yeah. No, the the way that the professional services bidding works is that we go through the process, pick the person that we want to work with, and then, you know, work with them to try and get a contract that is agreeable to both sides. And if we're not able to do that, then we talk to the next.
So you can't ask two, I mean, two, two potential strong candidates, you can't ask them both to present a fee, a fee bid. I mean, we think you'd be able to, you're on the card, we have two prices out there.
Yeah. I mean, we could. This is the this is my first time going through this sort of bid process. How about I touch base with Joe about it since he was really suggested this to us as to what he thinks as far as you know, doing, asking something like that? And get his his thoughts on it as far as, you know, we're thinking about doing this, you know, how would we work it in? Please let me know if it's, you know, I think it's a terrible idea.
Basically, we're hiring a consultant, and consultants.
The fee matters.
You know, the fee matters as part of the contract.
Yeah.
If two guys are really close, one is going to charge $30,000 or more.
Yep. Yep, yep.
I I have another suggestion, and that is I honestly think these interviews are going to go long. And, you know, with a 4:30 start and a 6 o'clock wrap, I I'd like to, as a placeholder, perhaps find time Tuesday morning, just 30 minutes for us to reconvene if we need to, if there's not a clear preferred partner from the from day one, you know, maybe that we get to Monday at 5:55 and and we're like, okay, it's clear, it's it's number two, we don't need it, but um.
I think that's a worthwhile suggestion, Bonnie. And you know, we can, we can get it posted, and then if it's decided at the on Monday that there isn't value to having that second meeting, then we can always just cancel it. You know, we can, we can cancel it if it's already scheduled, but if we are sitting there on Monday and thinking, I really wish we could gather and talk about this tomorrow. Well, Open Meetings Act says we can't post it.
Right.
For no possibility, we might go back to you and say, we got to talk to Joe about this, this, and this.
Yeah, that's true as well. Yes. And I did talk to I did talk to Joe and Sean as as well, and if we wanted them to sit in on the interviews with us, they would do that. On the one hand, you know, they 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 have varying degrees of familiarity with the different contractors, so that might color things a bit. Obviously, they, Charles McNutt, they work with quite a lot. You know, and I'm always trying to be conscious of the fact that, well, Joe and Sean have generally been pretty generous with their time. You know, we we are going to be working with them on a specific project here, and when it comes to contractors, time is money.
Right, but I think for the final question, Joe.
Right. So I'm I'm throwing that out. There is something that I had discussed with them. It's a possibility if we really wanted to have them like actually present at the meeting. But I think that the follow-up and probably the way that would work better for us would be to just go through and then ask them any questions we might have as a follow-up. I think that would be a more efficient use of and their resources. So, okay, I think we're in agreement on that.
Great.
Um, okay, anything else that we need to get started out? Any other questions relating to the interviews that we'll be doing next Monday?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
So Eric, just for that recap on Tuesday that I had suggested, um, I'm sorry, it was a little hard to hear.
Oh, yeah. Well, while I have the three of you here, what is your availability for the meeting potentially next Tuesday? You're you're free all day? Okay. Kathy has good availability all day.
I do as well.
I I do as well. I I prefer to perhaps get it out of the way, if you will, if you will. Could we meet at over Zoom? At 10 o'clock, 9:30?
Andy, he'd be fine with me.
Yes.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll even put that in here in the notes.
Let's make it 9:30, because I start the desk at, well, if we can make it 9:30 or earlier, because I start the desk at 10. Or I could just give Eric my feedback, too, and he could share that if I have any.
9 o'clock's fine with me. Sure.
And sounds good. Okay, so I dropped the information in the meetings there in the CM interview docs, so that that'll be in there when I send it out to everybody. Okay. I think we've run through all of our contract manager items. I did have one other thing that I wanted to jump into that's related under any and all other business, which is, and I will here. But basically, it's the quote for services from Enberg Anderson. And what those would look like. For Pete's sake, I'm just going to find the you know, All Look is not the easiest thing to use as a web client. I always seem to get lost searching around for old emails and that. Anyway, I've got it included here in the in the packet as a part FYI part in case we wanted to take any any action on that. Here we go. Okay. I'm sorry here, folks. Got some technology issues happening to me. I have a PDF that I'm attempting to to open here, and for whatever reason, it's telling me that my PDF will not open. Hmm. I am not really sure why it would be why it's doing that. Opened fine when I received it. It'd be something about the may change its name. Well, I'm trying to here it is. There we go. Okay. Okay, so the Agreement for Interior Design Services for the Stroh Quiet Reading Room. So this is the agreement for the services of Enberg Anderson working through the design. It has the scope of basic services. The the project understanding discusses delivery method, budget, schedule, the information that we'll supply, as well as the information that they will then provide to us. Space planning, the construction documents to provide specifications for the work so that it can be bid, present presenting drawings that will show off what the final will look like. Drawings for plan review by the village of Lake Bluff for any approvals that we need to obtain, which there will be at least some since there'll be construction work. And that will require a bid permit, not a bid permit, but a work permit from the village. And then some exclusions. We're obviously working with plumbing, fire protection, and some of those other elements there. Selection of furnishings, working with us on that, as well as working with us on the bidding and selecting a vendor. So and then how they'll be involved as far as the construction process, working with the project manager, make sure that things are done to specifications. So they they have this laid out as their their scope of work with a price tag attached to it of $8,000, which is not insubstantial, but I I do think it's well within the library's ability to a cost that the library can't handle. So I had gotten this from from Sean here last week, and I wanted to get it in front of the building and grounds committee and the board here since if we want Enberg Anderson on board and working with us on getting the project done, then we'll need to get them on contract.
Is there seems to be some overlap between what Enberg Anderson has on this contract and what we would be asking the construction manager to do. Is that correct?
Well, a little bit, but mostly in areas of you know, reviewing the the bids for related materials that we would ask both opinions from both. You know, the the construction administration, you know, which is where the construction manager is going to be expected to be taking the lead. You know, it's a lot more limited in terms of the the scope, reviewing drawings, responding to requests from the contractor. You know, things more along those lines and review site visits for review.
Yeah, that now that I look at the list a little more closely, I can see that there there is some overlap, but not a lot.
Yeah, and the the overlap is is really areas where it's, you know, getting both their opinion on something, or they would be expected to collaborate.
I feel very strongly about something. Kayla does, too, and I'm actually discussing with Melissa Waters, she does also.
Can't can't hear you, Kathy. Sorry.
From who is our director of, I don't even know what she's called, fundraising coordinator, I guess. She thinks it's a great idea, and that is, I would want these plans that this $8,000 is calling for to include an option of a fireplace in the new quiet reading room. I know the original, well, we're going way back, Bonnie, ahead of your time to the first space study, the original rendering showed a fireplace in that room. It didn't show up then in the more recent, but a lot of us feel that it would add a very high desirability factor to the project in terms of future donors. So I would like it to be at least an option on these this estimate that would be prepared, an option with fireplace and without, so that a decision can be made based on dollars, what's the best plan. But I wouldn't want to lose the opportunity to see that in the renderings and and bids that are coming up at this point. And I know Kayla feels very strongly about that.
So I I now have a doubt in my mind. So my question is, the it it seems to me like Enberg are the architects. They're going to draw the plans for what the renovated room is going to look like. And then one of the three companies we're interviewing on Monday are actually going to execute that plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
A construction manager is probably a little bit like a general contractor.
Yeah.
It's probably an analogous role, I think.
I um, I I'd like an opportunity to read the this proposal. I looked for it, and I couldn't find it. I know you referenced it in your email, Eric. But with all the other, I just, I couldn't find it. So would it be possible to, oh, I know you're asking us to, to make a decision on bringing this forward to the full board for tomorrow, right?
It doesn't need to be a decision for the full board tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I have, there is an option if it was desired, but it doesn't. We want to, I think, the decision on it. October or, no, I, August. Don't move faster than we need to, Eric. September is fine. September should be fine. We, we really just need to be thinking about it and, you know, in, in a situation where not really sure how much or how little discussion we wanted to have on it, I wanted to get it out there, give us the option to approve it if we found that there wasn't much to discuss, but also the option to look at it longer if we wanted to approve it later.
We should also discuss the foundation meeting, which is Wednesday.
Yes. Yeah. And Kathy points out that it'll be an item that we'll want to discuss with the foundation, which is meeting on, is it Wednesday? Yeah, this Wednesday. I have many meetings this week, I'm sorry.
So I, I'd like to see it on the agenda for the next Building and Grounds. We can have the input from the foundation and just an opportunity to kind of read through it and better understand because like, like Janie's first look, look at it or her comments today is I'm just, I'm seeing more overlap than I expected between
Yeah.
construction manager and whatever, I don't know what the, what the title would be for Enberg's proposal, in addition to kind of selecting the, the finish, the finishing, the furniture, the color scheme, the drawings. There's a little, there's a little more like, you know, the onsite visits and stuff like that.
It's in the interior design.
Design services, okay.
It also, it also sounds to me a lot like, well, a little like, none of this work has been done. So I don't want to pay to have it done again. I think, but I'm sure that's not where Joe's going, but I think we need to know more about this. Maybe even a Zoom with him.
Yeah. No, that could be a real good idea with any questions that we've got. I'm sure Joe or Sean would be happy to join us for a Zoom discussion so that we can feel completely comfortable with what we're signing off on. And Bonnie, I think in terms of thinking, you know, next Building and Grounds Committee meeting, I think that makes a lot of sense. Building and Grounds, as this goes, continues to move forward, is going to continue to meet pretty regularly as the committee that, what is a pretty substantial project, you know, that is a building project, you know, obviously there'll be a lot of Building and Grounds to discuss. Do we want to, Kathy's wondering if we want to set something up. I'm guessing you're thinking beyond the one on the 24th? Okay. Maybe looking towards the last week in, in August?
Well, we have foundation, we have to. So, okay.
I'm, I'm pretty open the whole week, so.
Do you have to follow up with Joe on this? I'm losing my train of.
Follow up with Joe on the, the contract?
Yeah. No, on, on this proposal that we're talking about versus just to rehash, go over together?
It would be to go over it together. No, actually, if we wanted to have Joe in, maybe I should, before we schedule something, maybe I should get his schedule first.
Sure.
Because it wouldn't be productive if we wanted him to join us to set something and then find out that he wasn't available.
Right, and sit around and then say what we're talking about here. So somewhere between the, the last week of August, first week of September. You know, everything.
Yeah. So I'll indicate to Joe then that we want to set something up to discuss with him before Labor Day. And then I will relay his availability to the group and we can figure out where that matches with our own. Okay. So I think that wraps up discussion on, on that. You know, I don't know what format this PDF document that I got from Enberg Anderson is, is in, but it did not want to get merged with any other PDFs, did not want to do apparently even a name change. So I really don't know what kind of format that is from Adobe. But it's non-cooperative, whatever it is.
Were you able to print it, Eric, with the other proposals?
Um, I should be able to print it, yeah. That shouldn't be, that shouldn't be a problem. Would you like a copy then for you to pick up? Okay.
Yes, we all probably would, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll get it, I'll get it sorted out here so that I can get it emailed out to everybody, too. And Bonnie, the, the hard copies that you're, that you're looking for, I'll put those in a folder at the desk so that it'll be there at the main desk for you to pick up.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other Building and Grounds questions to discuss? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Bonnie?
I, I second.
Okay. I?
I.
I.
Excellent.
Okay, and it is 5:29.
Yeah, thank you. See you tomorrow.
And see you tomorrow.
See you soon.
Thank you for joining us.